All right, as it is seven o'clock, we'll call this meeting of the Planning Commission of July 24th, 2017 to order. We'll ask for an approval of the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of June 26th, 2017. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then this is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. So is there anybody here who wants to come up and talk to us for anything that is not on the agenda? Anyone? No? Okay, moving right along.
Chair, before we move on to public hearings, could we add an item under other business to discuss some of the site conditions on the Cedar Point buildings?
Yes, I think that's great. We'll talk about the agenda amendment in order in number six, so maybe do that right after the other business?
Sounds good. Thank you.
So, our first item for consideration is to continue a public hearing to consider plans for a new quick-service restaurant with drive-through and site improvements at 6529 Penn Avenue, 6545 Penn Avenue, and 2210 66th Street West to August 28th, 2017. Staff, do you have anything to add to this?
No, the plans just hadn't been revised yet. Hopefully they'll be on the agenda for August.
Perfect. Do we make a motion? This is movable?
Yes, you have to make a motion to continue. Yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will hopefully hear that next month then. And then, our next item then is to cancel a public hearing to consider an interim use permit for housing with services established at 6808 Third Avenue. It looks like this applicant has withdrawn the application in order to further investigate the cost of adding a sprinkler system to the home. So, this was the one that we continued last month, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion? A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, our third item then, this is actually, yes, three, is a public hearing to consider request for a variance to allow a reduced rear building setback for a deck at 7222 James Avenue. Staff?
Thank you. The single-family home at 7222 James Avenue is located on a cul-de-sac, and it's on a lot that measures 93 feet wide by 100 feet deep. The property owner would like to add a 14-foot by 14-foot deck off the rear of the house. The rear setback requirement is 25 feet. Due to the unusual orientation of the house on the lot, along with a lot depth that is approximately 30 to 34 feet shallower than the average lot in Richfield, the proposed deck would be set back just 12 feet from the rear property line. The property owner is requesting a variance to reduce the rear setback requirement from 25 feet to 12 feet. Finding that the proposal meets all requirements necessary to issue a variance, staff is recommending approval.
And call in?
We did not receive any correspondence
Okay.
from anyone on this item.
And then, what is the purpose or the spirit of the ordinance to begin with? Like, why is there a setback limitation? Is it just noise and disturbance of the neighbors? Or is there something structurally that makes sense about why you wouldn't allow a deck so close to a neighbor?
Well, so the setback requirement is not just the deck. That's the setback requirement for actually the house, the principal structure itself. Other items like sheds and garages are allowed. They have different setback requirements and are allowed to be much... A garage, or a shed, or some other, a gazebo, some other type of accessory building would actually be allowed to be set back as little as three or five feet from that rear property line, depending on the property. But decks are not assigned their own... They're not assigned their own setback requirements in the zoning code. So, in this instance, it just follows that requirement for the principal structure
Okay.
of 25 feet.
All right, that answers a whole bunch of questions for me, so thank you. Well, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to come up and speak? Is the applicant here? Do you guys want to come up and tell us about your new deck? Yeah, come on up. If you want to come up? And just state your name and address, and sign in.
I'm here.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Philip Eggleston. I'm one of the owners of the property.
Thank you.
And I'm Ellen Eggleston.
Have you spoken to your neighbors that are... You're requesting the variance from?
So, I'll let you speak to that.
I've spoken to, I think, four of them.
Okay.
I've gone around a couple times to knock on doors and talk to them, but a few haven't been home every time I've gone.
Yeah.
The four I've talked to gave us a thumbs up.
Excellent. Anybody have any other questions for the...
I'm just curious how high off the ground the deck is? Oh, okay, okay.
It's off our main level.
Any other... Did you have any questions?
No.
No, okay. Is there anybody else here to speak at the public hearing? For this issue? No one? All right. I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing then.
I move we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any discussion? Yeah, you know. I was curious as, you know, what the whole point of why you would have this faraway. It seems like it makes sense to allow it, especially with the constraints of the yard and no one else came to speak against it. Works for me. All right. Does anyone want to put forth a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve the variance to reduce the rear building setback to 12 feet for that deck at 7222 James.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in...
Actually, sorry.
Discussion, sorry?
One question. In giving this variance, does that allow the applicant to build the structure to that point? Or would they, if they wanted to, could they tear down the deck and build in addition to 12 feet? Or would they need to come back for another variance? Okay, thank you, that is all.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought Matt was going to answer, but I will answer. Right, in general, this is going to give them a variance for the deck. It's specific to this project. It would be considered an expansion of the variance if they wanted to expand their house and create year-round space.
Okay, thank you.
And I just verified that in the resolution, it does specifically say the proposed deck will be set back 12 feet from the rear lot line.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Enjoy your deck. All right, our fourth item then is a public hearing to consider request for the site plan amendment to allow additional parking space at 6941 Nicollet Avenue. Staff?
Thank you. Prior to 2004, the property at 6941 Nicollet Avenue was a single-family home. After being rezoned to the Service Office District, the property was converted for office use. At the time, the property shared common ownership with the adjacent property to the south at 6945 Nicollet Avenue. When the city council granted site plan approval for the property in 2004, the resolution included a stipulation specifically prohibiting front yard parking. The minutes from that city council meeting in 2004 indicate that there was some concern about the parking of a commercial vehicle with signage, with corporate signage on it in the front yard area of the parking. Those city council meeting minutes and the resolution are attached to this report. Despite the prohibition on parking in that front yard area, the property was constructed exactly as it exists today with a paved... Excuse me. With a paved portion of the front yard area that, for all intents and purposes, is capable of accommodating vehicle parking. This area has been marked as no parking since 2004, although those markings have faded in recent years. The property was later sold to its current owner, Jay Peterson, doing business as Insurance Brokers of Minnesota. Mr. Peterson and his employees make use of all five parking spaces in the rear parking area, leaving no space available for customer parking. Mr. Peterson requests to remove the prohibition on parking in the front yard area and to allow the area in question to be striped for three parking spaces for customer use. This change requires an amendment to the previously approved site plan. Aside from striping this area for customer parking, no physical changes to the site are proposed. Finding that the proposal meets requirements, staff recommends approval of a site plan amendment removing the prohibition on parking in the front yard area. While the applicant has requested approval of three parking spaces, staff recommends allowing the area to be striped for two parking spaces for customer use. The reasoning for this recommendation is that the area that would be designated as that third parking space is actually fully within the public right-of-way for Nicollet Avenue, and it may not be counted as a parking space. Staff recommends retaining a prohibition on the parking of commercial vehicles in the front yard area. That concludes the staff report. Mr. Peterson is here to answer any questions, and staff will stand for any questions as well. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for staff right away?
I have a question. So, I was looking at the photo while you were talking. And so, are you saying that it would be allowable to have customer parking in all three spots, but only commercial parking? Or is that the same thing?
No, the entire area would be... The way the resolution is written, it contains a prohibition on the parking of commercial vehicles. I think just to be consistent with... Both with the zoning district, the Service Office zoning district is meant to be kind of that in-between area that allows light office business uses, you know, either adjacent to single-family homes, or exactly in this situation where you've got a former single-family home that was converted for office use. So I think we're just wanting to be consistent and also respecting the wishes of what the city council had approved at the time to continue that prohibition on commercial vehicles there. The nuance between two and three parking spaces is that while technically the area is wide enough to accommodate three parking spaces, that third space is actually outside of the property line. It's fully within the Nicollet Avenue right-of-way. And that entire area basically could, should Nicollet Avenue be reconstructed in the future, including wider sidewalks, a boulevard, bike lanes, whatever, that area basically is fair game to be included in Nicollet Avenue reconstruction.
So, there is a brick fence essentially, right? In between where you're saying that third stall, public right-of-way? Am I looking at that wrong?
Yes, that, so the brick fence retaining wall, that's actually, that's adjacent to the sidewalk.
Okay. So the, we'll call it the third stall.
Yeah.
Is, that would be the public right-of-way? And then there's a fence?
No, that's, sorry, that's not correct. If you look at the image on page 28 of your packet...
Perhaps the AV person could pull up picture from our computers too.
Right there. Right. So it would be like, you can't park here, but you...
So the blue...
There's a brick in between it anyways.
Just to clarify, so the blue line that you see in that image?
Yeah.
That is the property line.
Okay.
The brick wall is out from that, right along the sidewalk there. It's kind of casting a shadow on the sidewalk. So, technically... Technically speaking, a vehicle can be parked in that third space.
Yes.
It just cannot be counted towards parking total.
Okay.
Because it does not belong to him.
Okay. So it looks like a parking spot, but we're not going to count it a parking spot?
That is correct.
Thank you, okay.
And just one additional item. We are not authorized to give him permission to park on other people's land.
Okay, thank you. Are we going to require the no parking be repainted in that?
No, we consulted with Public Works staff and they did not make that recommendation. Initially, planning staff had considered recommending reconstruction of the curb or something in that area to make that clear. And Public Works staff was very clear that they did not want to see any construction in the right-of-way area whatsoever, just because of that pending reconstruction in however many years Nicollet Avenue is reconstructed.
Clear on that, thank you.
Can you clarify, is it legal to park in the right-of-way?
There are other, we don't, we're not authorizing it as part of this, but there certainly are many other sites along Nicollet Avenue with similar property line situations as this, where parking lots do exist, where existing parking lots do extend into the right-of-way. You can see that actually on the property just the south of that, where the property line extends much further out towards the right-of-way. So we're not, as part of this site plan amendment, and in the proposed resolution, we're not explicitly authorizing or prohibiting parking in the right-of-way.
Very gray area.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to hear from the applicant, but I think what frustrates me about the site currently is that there are very frequently cars parked in this. And if we, looking at this packet, are not able to really understand where people can park, I don't think the average customer is going to understand that either. But I'd certainly like to hear from the applicant in the hearing.
I would just not like it to look like a parking spot. Someone parks there, the police come by and they get a ticket. It would feel very unfair.
Cheer, freeze, Daniels. Yes, it absolutely would. And we are, and the police are not going to come and take it because they don't know that this isn't a parking spot, an illegal parking spot. Your property line is not marked, nor are the police in charge of enforcing property lines and whether you park over property lines. So, just to be clear, we, as the city, cannot give someone permission to use someone else's land. And so, we cannot include in this resolution that there are three stalls because we do not have county authorization to let them use the county's land. That said, I'm sure that there will be cars parked there and no one is going to go out and say, you know... I don't even think they could give you a ticket for this. There is no such thing, as far as I'm aware.
Wanted to make sure. And then, are there requirements to have handicap-accessible parking?
That's correct. And in the existing rear parking lot, there is a handicap-accessible stall.
That staff is taking up, not you staff, their staff is taking up those five spots? Okay. So there's plenty of space for everyone. Okay. Any other questions? All right, so this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come up and speak, if the applicant would like to come up? We'd love to hear from you.
I'm Jay Peterson, and my wife is Rachel.
I'm a, we're 50% owners in the property, so.
Perfect.
And then, our one entity then, 6941 Nicollet Avenue LLC owns the property. And then, my insurance agency technically leases space. And right now, there's myself and I have four employees. And as you heard, there's five of us then. And actually, so four of us can really park in the back because the fifth parking place in the back is the handicap spot. So we technically actually have one employee right now parking out front.
So this would lead to one additional space for someone coming in?
For customer parking, correct.
All right, any questions for the applicant? No? Okay, thank you. Is anyone else here to, would like to come speak? Anyone? Okay, we'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there somebody want to make a motion about this amendment? Then we can chat if we have questions? I'll make the motion to approve staff's recommendation as is. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess I just wanted to clarify, although it was not wanted by Public Works and you're not pursuing it, moving the curb, do you have the power to require that to be marked as no parking? Or because that's county property, would you not be able to ask the applicant to touch it in any way?
That's correct. Public Works, you know, I think in any situation where there's a pending reconstruction or not, they don't like to see any new construction or really any changes whatsoever in the right-of-way.
Okay.
It feels really great to me, but I'm glad we've talked about it and laid it out. So hopefully, if there's any future questions, they can reference back to this. Yeah, you know, I read through the notes of the former city council. I was hoping Commissioner Rosenberg would be here because she was on the city council then, if she remembered any part of it. But I think the main concern was commercial vehicles and using vehicles as signers. So I feel like we are still keeping that intact while moving this along, so I will be voting yes. Any other discussion? Anybody else want to say anything? All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Enjoy your parking. I lost my mouse. Yeah, oh, that's because I'm on this. Looks just like my screen. Okay. So next is a public hearing to consider request for a site plan amendment and variance to allow a building addition and reconfigured parking lot for K-8 school at 1401 76th Street West. Staff?
Thank you. Seven Hills Preparatory Academy has been operating out of the building at 1401 76th Street West since 2015. The building was previously home to the Minnesota School of Business, which recently vacated their space after sharing the building with Seven Hills over the last two years. Seven Hills has continued to expand and add more grade levels at the site. They expect to fully occupy the building by the 2020-2021 school year. The existing facility does not have a designated gymnasium, and Seven Hills has been using converted or makeshift spaces in the building for physical education. Seven Hills is now proposing a building addition of approximately 13,000 square feet to house a gymnasium for physical education programs and athletic activities. The building addition will also include a multipurpose room, restrooms and changing rooms, and equipment storage space. The proposal would remove a portion of the existing parking lot to accommodate the building addition and an outdoor playground. Other portions of the parking lot would be reconfigured for improved bus and automobile circulation and drop-off. New landscaping would be provided around the building addition, the playground, and in the boulevard area along 76th Street. Seven Hills and city staff have discussed several possible options to improve pedestrian and bicycle connections to the site, and that conversation is ongoing. The proposal also requires a variance to building setback regulations. Along the west property line, the minimum setback requirement is 25 feet. A 10-foot setback is proposed for that building addition. Given that the west side of the property is directly adjacent to 35W rather than a local street or another property, this is found to be a unique circumstance warranting granting a variance. A full discussion of general site plan requirements and variance findings is included as an attachment to this report. Finding that the proposal meets requirements, staff is recommending approval of the site plan amendment and variance. And then, late this afternoon, Seven Hills provided some additional renderings that were not included in your packet. The commission can access those. If you minimize the Adobe Reader there and look in your folder, you'll find a file in the open folder there. You'll find a document called Seven Hills Renderings. You can open those for some higher-resolution renderings. Perhaps a technician can bring those up on the screen? So staff can stand for any questions. And Seven Hills and their architect are here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
I just had a quick question about the existing building. Did that also need a variance, or was that setback not? Because that looks the same 11.3 feet.
That's correct, yeah. It looks, in searching the files, I mean, we're going back to the early 1980s when that site plan was approved. So it's, I don't know what the zoning district was at the time that the building was approved. It may have been different. There may have been more right-of-way. It was difficult to tell. It required, the building was approved by what was at the time called an off-street parking permit, which today we call a site plan approval.
Okay.
But that was what I found in the staff report. I didn't find clear evidence that there was a variance granted, but like I said, regulations may have been different 35 years ago.
Thanks, just curious. Does anybody else have any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come up and speak, if they have anything to say? Is applicant here? Do you want to come up? So you can just sign in, state your name and address.
My name is Carl Schleter. I'm Executive Director of Seven Hills Preparatory Academy. In your packet, there was an executive summary about our school, K-8 Charter Public School with a classical model. I want to acknowledge some of the representatives from our school community tonight, some board members, some staff, PTA, and some of our partners. As a classical school, we believe in really educating the whole child. We teach grammar, logic, rhetoric, and debate. But we also believe that a well-developed lifelong learner also has to have an active body in addition to an active mind. And we have struggled for the past couple of years working with a double room and a parking lot in terms of, to deliver our physical education curriculum. Our sixth to eighth grade students in middle school have physical education every single day. In our elementary school, students have physical education every other day. So we really believe, again, in educating both the physical part of a child as well as the cognitive and intellectual part of the child. In addition, citizenship is in our mission. So I want to acknowledge the Planning Commission and their time and consideration of our request. We've been really grateful to the city of Richfield for their support and guidance since we've moved here as a middle school, and then since we've replicated our kindergarten and first grade this past year. And we're excited about the possibility for this project because having a gymnasium will allow us to really realize the fullness of our mission. And because citizenship is in our mission, we are also really committed to being in Richfield, to giving back to Richfield, to being a really integral part of the Richfield community here. So, thank you again for your time and consideration of the request tonight. We're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing, so if anybody else would like to come up and speak, you're welcome? Anybody? All right, well, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing then.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Would anybody like to make a motion? I'll move the staff recommendation to approve as is. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah.
I'm wondering if staff could just give an update on what the status of the conversation is about the pedestrian connection? And in particular, I mean, this is really an awesome use for the site. It's great to see this building occupied, and I generally love the site plan. But the only that concerns me is that the property does have access to a sidewalk on the north side that was previously functional access. I know they're now using that space for an outdoor play area or physical education area. And the proposed site plan doesn't connect to that sidewalk. So could you describe if that will be resolved in that sort of negotiation?
Yes, thank you. So, Commissioner Hayford O'Leary, in the, while the report was being written and since then, staff has continued conversation both with Richfield Public Works staff, with the city engineer, as well as with Seven Hills and their architect team to improve that connection. So, there is a stipulation in the resolution that says "The applicant shall work with Richfield Community Development and Public Works staff to further refine and improve pedestrian and bicycle connections from 76th Street to the building entrance." What is shown on the plans today would not meet that requirement. What is shown is probably sufficient for bicycle connection. Show it in their, in the plans included in the packet, a striped bicycle lane was shown on Gerard Avenue there. And the Public Works staff have, they do not have objections, but that would be, you know, an improvement on a public street and would certainly require the proper vetting and, I guess, standard procedures for when we stripe a bicycle lane on any street. So that, I guess, that one is still under review. But that would probably, that, you know, that on-street bike lane would probably meet the requirement for an improved bicycle connection. I think there was some miscommunication between... it, I think there was some miscommunication between s- or miscommunication or misunderstanding between staff and the architect as um, plans were being revised as to, you know, whether that would be acceptable pedestrians, which, you know, it would not. Um, a striped on-street bicycle lane is not a, not a pedestrian connection. And the applicant understands that. Um, there were several, several different kind of scenarios um presented to us as the plans evolved. Um, an earlier version of the plans showed sort of a partial sidewalk extending about, I think it was about seventy feet or so south of seventy six street and then it terminated in a, in a stairway coming down uh to the parking lot. Um, that was one option they presented. But um, that would obviously not be a, a stairway would not be ADA accessible, so it would leave anyone, you know, with um, with disabilities, you know, kind of um left to walking in the street as well. Um, the staff's preference is for a full sidewalk down um, down Gerard Avenue from, from the existing sidewalk on, from the intersection at seventy six street, all the way down to that first uh curb cut or driveway into the property where um, on your plans, that's where it shows this connection across the parking lot would pick up. So that, that remains staff's preference. Um, Seven Hills and, and their architect team have indicated that they'll continue to develop that option and hopefully um will have revised plans by the time this goes to the city council on August eighth.
Okay, thank you very much for that, that. And yeah, I would certainly agree that would be the sort of thing I would like to see, but I, I trust you and I trust Seven Hills to, to work this out in a satisfactory way. But yeah, that was my only concern. Otherwise, I'm happy to support this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, the setback from thirty five W like that seems totally fine to me. And looking at the renderings, I think you've done a terrific job of meshing it back with the other building and it looks like it fits there. So kudos to you guys. That's great. Any other discussion? Alright, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next. Um, is a uh item for commission consideration is to amend the planning commission bylaws to reflect changes in the format of the meetings. Staff.
Thank you. So the proposed bylaw change is just uh to address the fact that we've moved to an online agenda preparation software. Um, and our meetings are set up a little bit differently now and this bylaw cha- change reflects that. One thing to note is uh changes to the bylaws require a two-thirds vote of the commission, so it would have to be a unanimous vote tonight.
Questions of staff. Um, is it possible also to um make a change to the public hearing portion as well or would that need to be a separate agenda item?
No, it's not a public hearing, so you could make an amendment.
Okay. Um, any other questions? So I would propose that we um amend as is, but I would also propose that we move five A under public hearings, which is questions of staff, up to two A. Which is generally how we've been running our meetings, right? Like we ask you guys questions and then um then we open the public hearing and just, I think that format flows nicely. And so I would like to make that as part of our actual regulations and I will start following them to a T. As I have not been.
Okay, so that's an uh motion to further amend. Is there a second on that?
We voted just the amendment or discuss just the amendment then?
Yeah.
But no, I have nothing to discuss. I have just a clarifying process. I have no issues with that.
Any other discussion on that?
Just one second.
Sorry.
Well, and we also don't have an initial motion, I don't think. So I think you'd need to make the motion to approve the staff recommendation with that change. But then we should discuss because I want to make a comment to that, so.
Right. Chair Vries Daniels, do you have the bylaws in front of you?
I do.
Okay, so rereading five A.
Yeah, you kind of have to split it in half. So all questions, or maybe we say under two A is that chair shall call upon the community development director, does need to present the staff report, and then A is all questions and statements. Questions will be asked of Richfield staff? It's clunky.
Right now, the five A is just um saying that questions should be directed through you.
Okay.
Any question or statement, we should address you first as opposed to um earlier I did this, I said uh Commissioner Hayford O'Leary. That's not technically what this is saying. This is saying all questions should be uh chairperson, members of the commission first. Um, so I understand that what you're asking for is that we just add something specific in here that says the chair shall call on community development director or does it need to present the staff report? The commission shall have an opportunity to question staff?
Yeah.
Correct?
I just think it's anyone coming to speak to us who maybe hasn't looked at the process can go through this and understand what the flow will look like.
Right, so is that wording okay if we just add it to the end of that sentence?
Any other? Yeah, okay.
Okay, can we motion one more time?
Yes. Um, so make the motion to approve the preceding format meeting changes as noted as well as add under public hearing number two, the chair shall call upon the community development director or does need to prevent the staff report and stand for questions from commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. I'll get this right.
So I um I guess it's public hearing, I was gonna say chair.
Yes.
May I? Um, no, I, so I, yeah, I, I agree with your change there because I think when there are things that weren't clear about, it's often that the public is unclear about that too and it's good to clarify. One additional minor change, um, I was hoping we could also do under section seven proceedings, a format of meeting, if we could add approval of agenda as a standard item. And I wonder if staff could speak to if that is a technical problem to add that. It's helpful to have a designated point that if a commission member does need to add something, I, I've added something today and I know Commissioner Holberg did a, a couple of meetings ago. So to have a designated point that we're reviewing and approving the agenda. Does that, does that create a technical issue?
Yes, perhaps we could um direct staff to amend the bylaws to match the city council's procedure for approval of the agenda. I'm just not sure which order they put that in and we might as well may.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, I would.
Pause that, maybe amend it next time when we know what the order is or?
We can do that or you can just direct us to insert it into the format of the meeting.
I will amend my motion to direct you to insert that to the motion meeting as a second. Do you? Okay, resecond that. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And then we have a new item, item number seven, Commissioner O'Leary, you wanted to discuss?
So this got raised um when I mentioned in my liaison report at the Transportation Commission, a commission member had questions about the utility boxes at the Cedar Point Building that is pretty much complete now. Um, in looking at the building myself, I agreed with the concern about the utility boxes and if you haven't been there, I've taken some pictures and brought them with. Um, both the utility boxes and the pedestrian paths, and I've reached out to staff and they've, and Melissa's given me some explanation of some of the issues. So, I, you know, I don't, I don't have any particular action item for this um tonight, but basically I was just hoping we could sort of discuss it, understand what the issues are with staff and understand, I think, how we could do better in the future. Um, I think my, some of my concerns is although we, our, our motion was to have sidewalk access directly from the sixty-six street sidewalk to the door, uh, none of the paths added actually go directly to a customer entrance. Um, the utilities didn't even occur to me and I've got kind of a funny picture at the end just for scale of the, of the item. The utility issues didn't really occur to me because that wasn't in the site plan and I didn't really know how we could or should account for that, but um, I guess Melissa, I'm wondering if you could just, I know you've already described over email, but just so everybody could hear it, just explain what some of the issues are that are going on.
Sure, um, I'll tackle the sidewalk first. The sidewalk issue is that, yes, everyone was aware of your um stipulation and that was communicated to the developer and the architects and the civil engineers. And the civil engineer came back and said that we can't make that sidewalk work without um switchbacks. There was an eight percent grade is what they told us. So I do not shoot elevations. I'm aware of the fact that Sean uh disagrees with the fact that there's an eight percent grade. Um, I eyeballing it would say that it could have worked as well. However, this is built based on plans that they submit and the civil engineer tells staff. Um, there's I'm not really sure what we could have done differently there. I agree, it is not ideal. However, at this point with the transformer there, it would be difficult to change the sidewalk because now there are grade issues. It would involve a retaining wall. Um, so I'm not really sure what to say about that one. I was told that the sidewalks would not work. Three sidewalks coming from the south side of the building seemed the best we could get and these are the plans that were approved. In terms of the utilities, that's still um a work in progress. Uh, they do look pretty terrible right now. Uh, the sidewalk also has to be expanded. It is not wide enough. It's not wide enough for um ADA. It's not wide enough for their trash dumpsters. Um, these are things that get addressed as a building is finished. That building is not finished. The building has not been issued a certificate of occupancy. Some of the tenants, AT&T has a temporary certificate of occupancy. We have escrow items listed. There are also conditions on a full building permit. These are the types of things that get included there. So uh, the developer is aware of the fact that they have to expand the sidewalk. They're aware of the fact um that they're gonna have to do a better job of screening those utilities now, um, because they, they installed them without a large enough sidewalk. They have to put in um some sort of barrier to make sure that people do not walk into these utilities. Um, while they would like to put in bollards, that is not what they will be putting in. They'll be putting in some decorative screens. Um, the transformer, we struggle with transformers on many sites. Uh, the utility companies generally dictate where those go. Um, I agree, this one is terribly unfortunate. It will be screened with landscaping. That will make it better, but um especially with this four-sided architecture now and pulling things up to the street, everything is so much more visible and I think the developers are struggling with where to put these utilitarian items. This is a terrible spot. There's, there's nothing else to say about it. Hopefully the landscaping will uh minimize its, its impact, its appearance.
Yeah. Um, I agree and thank you for bringing this because I think it, it looks atrocious. And I think it's a good learning moment for us too, right? To say in the future as these developments come up, like what should we really be looking for and learn from this and you know, what can we dictate to be really clear about this is unacceptable. This will not happen again. Um, and try to make this as look as good as we can now. I just keep thinking about what's gonna be across the street, which is hopefully not going to turn out like this. I mean, from the plans we saw were much better than this. Um, and yeah.
One other thing I'll add is that um, you know, the utilities on this building, leaving the transformer out, um, that are the worst are the ones that are on the parts of the wall that protrude. Um, as opposed to the ones that are kind of setback in that recessed area. Those aren't nearly as noticeable.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the problem is that the rest of this building, the problem, is glass.
Yeah.
So they struggle with where, I mean, there was no other panel. This is about seven feet of meters uh for this building, meters and valves and um there, there just wasn't another recessed area to sneak these in. So again, thanks for, I mean, thanks for bringing it up because then we can talk to you guys about the way that this works, that a building starts to look complete, tenants start to move in and we are still holding things. Uh, we're often still holding a lot of money to make sure that things get completed, but their tenants can start operating and they can start bringing in income.
Yeah.
Chair?
Yes.
Couple of questions. Um, what are, what are the options as far as widening the sidewalk at this point?
They're gonna have to reconstruct the sidewalk.
To tear out the existing sidewalk and, okay.
That I I believe they'll have to tear it out and start over. I'm not sure how they could just add additional. Okay.
Yeah. I, I was just curious about that. And then what, I, I'm just curious about the timeline for completion and is the completion or is the issuance of their certificate of occupancy contingent upon finishing this or like what comes next?
Yes, so there's already an escrow in place. Some of the items are already listed in that. Things like the rooftop units haven't been screened yet. Um, there are some things with the dumpsters that are on there. The temporary certificate of occupancy, there, there's always a deadline put on these things. Usually um, sometimes it's dependent on when the materials were, will come in. For instance, the rooftop screen units, there's a six-week lead time on those and they just ordered them, so we base the escrow on that. Um, to be honest, there are buildings that sit with a temporary CO for six, eight months while we wait for these things to go. The idea is hopefully that we are holding enough money that they want to get this done. Um, so there's a deadline on it. There's a deadline and there's money. Are we really going to revoke someone's certificate of occupancy and kick a tenant out because they have not finished by that deadline? Probably not. We do have that ability, but probably not. So the hope is that this is going to be finished this construction season. I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be. So that's the best answer I can give right now.
Is that temporary blade sign allowed? I thought those, like, that's in the picture. Those aren't, that's what I thought as well. Okay.
We, we did.
Winning.
As part of, um, there, there, if you remember, there was an ordinance amendment um earlier this year to allow for some expanded signage, temporary signage opportunities during sixty-six street, during sixty-six street construction. Um, however, which actually would allow that type of sign, which is normally not permitted. Um, but this site is outside the bounds of the project. Um, they're just a couple blocks east of where the project stops, so they're actually not eligible for that, so we'll, we'll respond accordingly.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for the update and for your actions on the screening. Um, yeah, obviously there were some things that I acknowledged that there's probably nothing to be done about this point, but certainly the experience of walking dead onto the trash door from the most central sidewalk is really unfortunate. I am wondering, is it possible to know these things at the point we get site plans to see where something like the transformer will be placed? Because I think had I known that, I think had many of us known that, we probably would have had something to say about it at the time.
Generally, when they come here, there are preliminary utility plans, but they haven't gone through enough. Um, they haven't gone through all of that work to figure that out. And my understanding is that the utility companies come out and they say it's gonna go here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we do our best to tell them that we need to see all of those utility pads on the plans. This one never showed up.
Yeah, and I'm glad to hear that the sidewalk next to the building will be widened because I think that will help. I think part of the issue is you're going, walking across this very large lawn and then you're kind of maneuvering around the side of the building. And obviously that gas meter is right at eye level, so I'm glad to hear that will be screened and it'll get a little bit more breathing room, so. I'm disappointed, of course, in the result. I think everybody is, but I'm glad to hear things are being done to get it as good as it can be. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. This is a nice segue into, I have um been talking with um city planner about doing a city tour for us. We used to do kind of a bike tour, but um, it's, I think it's good for us to get out and talk and see these things in real life, like after they've been built. Um, so I had proposed all kind of meeting in a location and then maybe taking a little bus tour through the city. Um, so I'm planning that, be on the lookout, the uh construction rerouting of transit kind of through a little wrench, but it's, we'll fix it. And so next time we have some fewer agenda items, hopefully we'll replace a meeting with that. Um, and invite the Transportation Commission and the city council, all kind of come and get out in the city and actually see the stuff we talk about, so. Just a heads up on that.
Could I ask one other update of staff, speaking of things that you have escrow for about the Audi Fountain? Is that on track or do you have any update on that?
We have an escrow for that. It um, it is under construction. If you've been out there, they have poured the concrete ring. Um, there were some issues with the connections to the storm sewer and what people wanted. And then there were some issues a little bit with the fountain design. Um, apparently, if you have a fountain that's flush with the ground, it has to be built to um swimming pool grade. So there were some design issues to be worked out. It will have a little bit of a lip on it now. Um, not that it won't be, I mean, it, it will be filtered water. There's, there's a variety of filters in there, but it will not be swimming pool grade. Um, so that, it's underway.
The more you know.
Thank you.
Um, alright, so we will move on to liaison reports. All right, so we will move on to liaison reports. Community Services, which is me, they canceled their last meeting, so no update. City Council, Susan is not here. Oh, I do have a question. So our last meeting, we had approved subway going forward, and I had read in the transcript that the city council held off for more public input. Are they opening a new public hearing for that matter? No.
So the item at the city council was actually not a public hearing. The public hearing was conducted here. I believe the new city council member just hadn't had time to review the item and requested basically to continue the item two cycles. So he had a little more time to consider it and get constituent feedback. But it is scheduled for the August 8 city council meeting.
Thank you. HRA?
The HRA had a joint study session with city council last week, and they discussed ordinances that would work towards more affordable housing in Richfield, more diverse housing in Richfield, and preserving naturally occurring affordable housing. So there's a lot to the meeting and a lot covered, and I think it'll be good to see it. It's not on the website yet, is it?
I believe the materials from the work session have been posted.
Okay.
But I will double-check that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. School Board?
No report.
Okay. Transportation Commission?
Two items. One was, I think I've given this update every time I've come from the Transportation Commission. Again, about Sixty-Ninth Street between Penn and Xerxes, they have officially made a recommendation. And I don't know if the council's taken action on it yet, but that should be the end of it. They want to keep the existing pylon setup that they have now permanently. The only change would be that they would make a little bit wider shoulder on the south side of the road, because there have been some complaints from homeowners trying to mow their lawn, and there's a car like right by the curb. So that'll actually narrow up the lanes a little bit more. On the other item, I wanted to mention, we had a presentation on the D-line, which is an arterial bus rapid transit line on Portland Avenue, which is planned for like 2019 or 2020. So it would be a huge improvement in service on Portland Avenue. One thing that was surprising to me during that meeting was that they did announce that they're currently considering only stops at Sixty-Sixth, Seventy-third, and Seventy-seventh. So basically, we'd have a seven-block gap in the middle of Richfield with no stops. And because the five would significantly reduce the service, it would be basically a loss of bus service right here to Portland Avenue. So I was certainly concerned about this, and I've written my council members. And if you share that concern, I would encourage you to do so, because I, although I think getting the bus rapid transit would be a huge upgrade, losing those stops would be a big deal to Richfield.
I agree, I take that bus often, and there's lots of people getting on and off, so, yeah, thank you. Chamber of Commerce, Gordon's not here. Any other? Anything else? Nope, all right.
Thank you. I was waiting for you to say.
Sorry.
So next meeting, time and location. Tentatively, we've got a joint work session with the council and HRA scheduled for August 21st at 6:15. And that's a follow-up on that apartment proposal for the former garage site. As you know, ran out of time at that last work session, so they will be back. Then also, just to let you know, the inland development with the Chamberlain Development, which is the apartment development on the east side, three buildings, they have submitted their application, it came in today. So every indication is that they will be on your agenda in August.
And they held a open house?
Yes, there was a neighborhood open house at Mount Calvary Education Building. There were probably about, I would estimate about twenty people came. The open house was from four, seven, so sort of sparsely attended. But that project has been out there for a while, so I think that people are familiar or more familiar with that one. And we'll see their plans in August. A short update on the comp plan. Staff has taken a look at some draft concepts for the hub. Those are based on a market study that the consultant did. We're just refining those a little bit, and then we will have those ready for an open house in August. It's going to be August 23rd. Likely will be here at City Hall, although we're firming that up. They've also completed a draft parks inventory, gone through all of the parks, taken a lot of the feedback that we heard through our surveys and our pop-up events. And also, they had a half-day work session with staff to talk about what they're seeing in the parks. So they put together a parks inventory, and now we'll be looking for some feedback on if there is going to be one dog park. Where should it be? That kind of thing. So that also will be at the open house. And then we're now digging into the goals and policies of the comp plan, taking a first crack at those. And then we'll bring forward those recommendations, some modifications to the steering committee in August. That meeting is on August 14th, I believe. And then bring the recommendations together to that open house on the 23rd. So moving along with that, and you should be seeing that market study. We're just finalizing some language in there, and then we'll be sharing that with the council and the Planning Commission, HRA. That's it.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.